Good evening, welcome to the planning commission. The date is Monday, February 23rd. Will everyone please rise for a pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. First item of tonight's agenda is actual approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any comments or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good. The next item is the approval of the minutes for the February 9th, 2015 meeting. Does anyone have any comments or any changes that they need to make? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes of the February 9th, 2015 meeting.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
And I do as well, Julie. Is that it? Okay. Moving on, on to the public hearings for tonight. The first public hearing is the Wagner property. Location of the property is 10-841 and 10-861 Blossom Road. The request is for planned unit development concept review and 6.5 acres. A planned unit development district review with waivers on 6.5 acres. Zoning district change from R1-22 to R1-13.5 on 6.5 acres. And a preliminary plot on 6.5 acres into 12 lots and road right-of-way. With that being said, will the proponent of the project please come forward? Spell your name, spell your last name for city record, and then tell us a little bit about your project, please.
Mr. Chair and Commission, my name is Dan Blake with Pembenton Land Company, B-L-A-K-E, for the record. Pleased to be here tonight to talk to you just briefly about our proposed project. I'll start here and then I'll go over to a map, I think. One of the points that I think is fun and worth stating that staff didn't get into is this is actually redevelopment. I don't know when you call it redevelopment versus infill, but this is the, this is plating of two lots that were platted in Eden Acres in 1912. Blossom Road was platted in 1912 as well as part of that plot. And Blossom Road was named after George Blossom, who was the investor developer that did the Eden Acres plat in 1912. So, we're taking two lots from that plat at which one had a house on it, or has a house on it. The other one has sat vacant since 1912 and now redeveloping it to fit in with the surroundings. So, it's kind of fun that there's some history there.
So, on the map, north being, north being to the left, I will, I guess I'll first interject that we did have a neighborhood meeting last month. I would guess many of these people and quite a few more, we had more than 30 people at our neighborhood meeting, went over this proposal, which really has not changed other than small details since then. I think the neighbors asked a lot of questions, said a lot of things. We didn't feel like there were objections, but more questions of which a lot of them we were able to answer, some we've continued to answer and be available to answer anymore if they're today anyway. So, north to the left, this is Blossom Road Prairie Lutheran Church. We've got the Pioneer Trails townhouses to the east, and we have single-family to the west and to the south. The single-family developments were done in the 80s and left the Wagner property with a stub at Windsor, a stub at Lawson, and a stub at Mead, and then the Blossom Road frontage. When we first met with staff, we talked about scenarios, cul-de-sacs, this and that. Staff made it really extremely clear, and we listened very well, that they wanted the roads to connect and didn't want cul-de-sacs. So, given that, there was almost no design choices, and that's how the layout landed with this road connecting back to there. This topography with such a connecting back that way is nearly impossible, so that wasn't even an option. So, we have 12 lots on six and a half acres. The lots range from 90 feet wide to 120 feet wide as compared to the ordinance minimum of 85. So, we're a little bit bigger than the minimum, maybe a little bit bigger than some of the lots that have been done recently in town, but very consistent with, if not larger than the lots that are around it. There's a lot of topography on the site. This water body pond was actually constructed, the first part of the pond was constructed as part of the Pioneer Trails development. Second part was constructed by Hennepin County as part of the improvements to Pioneer Trail in late 90s. Interestingly enough, this area was deemed not to be wetlands, but just a stormwater pond because of that it was constructed in non-wetland areas. So, it just changes the regulatory process a little bit, but it's still water and we're proposing to expand it slightly. But obviously, that's at the bottom of the hill. This is the high end, drops down, and then rises back up. And there's a pretty big natural ridge at that property line between the existing houses and our site. The existing house sits about here. There's trees in that front yard, existing woods, and then the biggest, second biggest chunk of trees is down in this corner. Most of the trees, or not most, but a good portion of the trees on the tree survey are actually cedars that have grown up since the landowner stopped pasturing, active pasturing of this property. But there are oak trees along this property line in this, in this corner, which we're preserving the ones we can and per requirements replacing based on the formula of the remaining. That said, I guess I'd rather answer questions that the commission might have, or staff or as you see fit, than go on about other details.
Thank you much for your time. We'll go to city staff report, and then if we have any questions, we'll come back to you. Thank you very much. Julie, want to take us through the staff report, please?
Sure. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the request before you tonight is a request to rezone the property from R122 to R113.5, PUD district review with waivers. They are requesting a waiver with regard to the lot width at the right-of-way line. City code requires that the lots be 85 feet wide at the front property line at the right-of-way. Some of the lots are able to meet the 85-foot width at the setback line, but because of the desire to connect all of the existing roads that led into the property, that led to the situation where they needed to request the waiver because they were unable to meet the lot frontage. Certainly, if they would have proposed cul-de-sacs, they may not have needed those waivers, but they are asking for that waiver. In addition, it is a preliminary plat to create 12 single-family lots. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions noted in your report. Now, I'm having to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. With that being said, commissioners, do you have any comments or questions for either city staff or the proponent? No, not seeing any right-of-way. Knowing that this is an open forum, is there anyone out in the audience that has any questions or concerns about this project? If so, now would the time, now would be the time to come forward.
Can you explain why?
Ma'am, can you come forward, please state your name, for city record, and ask your question?
I'm Kathy Mason, I'm one of the neighbors. I'm just curious about-
Can you come all the way forward, ma'am, please? Thank you very much.
The cul-de-sacs? I'm Kathy Mason. What, who was "they" that said that we didn't want cul-de-sacs?
Julie, can you help answer that question?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, members of the audience, when, sorry, Mr. Chair, members of the audience, when Mr. Blake and his representatives came in to meet with city staff, as all developers do when they find a piece of property that they're interested in, they come in and meet with city staff and generally ask, what's the property guided for? What's the property zoned for? What are the constraints? Or what's the city looking for on this property? And because of the way this property laid out and the streets that dead-ended into the property, staff, being planning staff and engineering staff communicated to the applicant and property owner that the expectation would be that those roads would connect consistent with the city's transportation plan and local street plans.
Does that help answer your question?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Julie. Is there anybody else out in the audience that has any comments or concerns or questions for that matter? Okay. Commissioners? Final call? Yes, ma'am.
I, Mr. Blake, I wonder if I could just ask you just one question. I noticed on the diagrams and the plans that you have sent to us that in your tree replacement program, there are a number of red pine trees, some of which end up in the right-of-way, so they're going to go. But they are state trees and are not just the cedars that grew up. They may have grown up, but they happen to be red cedars. I, I, red pines. I wondered whether you would take a look, they're to go right now, they're, they're going to be removed, according to what I read on the, on the plans. There may be one you could save, and I just thought, since you saw, the history of the area was fun. I'm on the historical society board, and a red pine in Eden Prairie has to be a little unusual. I don't know how it got there, but anyway.
Well, the, the red pine adjacent to the house and driveway are in neat straight rows, so I can guess how they got there. If there's other ones in the middle, I'm lacking that detail on, up top tip of my tongue. We'd be open to reviewing that. I mean, you know, you know, as developer, we don't want to take down trees we don't have to take down. They add value to the property. But given some of the design constraints, there's no way around some of the trees. Be glad to, you know, at a later time even talk specifically about an individual tree.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any other final comments? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor say aye.
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 And I move to recommend approval of the PUD concept review on 6.5 acres, the planned unit development review with waivers on 6.5 acres, the zoning district change from R122 to R113.5 on 6.5 acres. Preliminary plat on 6.5 acres into 12 lots and road right-of-way based on plans stamped and dated February 11th, 2015, and the information included in the staff report dated February 23rd, 2015.
Second.
And a second? Motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Congratulations, you moved forward with your project. Thank you very much. Moving on to the second public hearing is the code amendment relating to fence height by the city of Eden Prairie. Julie, I take it you'll be taking us through that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there is a code amendment before you this evening, specifically with regard to fence height. The city code currently restricts fence height to a maximum of six feet. As of January 24th of this year, the Minnesota State Building Code was revised to allow fences to be constructed to a height of seven feet without a permit. So, staff is proposing that the code be amended to be consistent with the state's building code, so that if someone, if a resident were to come in and want to construct a seven-foot tall fence, they wouldn't need a permit from the city, but way the code is written now, they would have to go through public process of a variance and receive a variance or a waiver in order to construct that. So, for consistency's sake, staff is recommending approval of this change.
Commissioners, do you have any questions, concerns? Yes, sir?
I have, I have a few questions, but I can wait till then if anybody else has.
Is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments about this code amendment, any questions? Seeing that this is an open forum, not seeing any, go right ahead, sir.
Are we limited, limited to being restrictive to seven feet, or can we have a conversation of perhaps having a lesser degree, like maybe eight feet or nine feet or something? Because I just went through the last six years, and there was a half a dozen that were eight feet. There was a 12-foot request for variance, so I'm kind of wondering, with the seven-foot mark, that's the building code side of it, but can we, is that the most restrictive that we can be?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, certainly the planning commission and the city council have that authority if they wish to revise the code to allow for a taller fence or a less restrictive, height restriction. The way it's written now, the six feet that was put in place from the most research that staff can pull together is that the six feet that's in code now is based on the fact that that's what building code would allow. In the instances where we've received requests over the last number of years for fences that are taller than that's, than that six-foot requirement, staff has analyzed what the purpose of the fence is, if there are some unique characteristics to the neighborhood, if there are other waivers that are being considered as a part of the PUD. So, it, probably the most recent one that you're recalling is, was over in the Belarive subdivision, and in that case, it was analyzed as what the height of the fence was at its tallest point versus how tall the fence was overall. So, if you recall, only, I believe, 3% of the entire length of the fence was exceeding that six percent, six-foot height requirement. So, there are a variety of things that staff would look at when making a recommendation on a variance of that sort.
I'll open up the question to some of the other commissioners if they would be, if they had thought about maybe the seven-foot, eight-foot. The reason I ask, I guess, is during my time on the commission, Bear Path requested an eight-foot variance, Sterling Fence required, requested an eight-foot variance, this enclave in the north sector requested a 10-foot variance, and then, as staff just pointed out, Belarive for a 16-foot area that had 16-foot. It wasn't all 16 feet, but that was the max. Now, I'm not sure what council did with this, but that's what came across our desk. So, I didn't know if, I was just opening up the question for conversation, if anybody else had any concerns on that.
Have, have the commission ever said no to a variance or declined it, that you remember, for this? I don't remember any off the top of my head.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in my time in recollection, no, they have not. In the couple of requests that I've been able to be a part of, from a staff perspective, when someone comes in and makes the request, or says they're interested in constructing a fence, staff will generally work with them quite extensively before the request even gets to you. So, sometimes the request started out much taller, but as staff works with them through design, either of the subdivision overall or individual parcels, they're able to fine-tune the request before it gets to this public process. In addition, I'd like to address Commissioner Woodkey's initial question about allowing fences by right that would be taller. They all, a property owner always has the right to come forward and request a taller fence, and it gives the neighboring property owners the opportunity to have public process to be able to come in and comment on any thoughts that they may have on measures that could be taken to mitigate a taller-than-average fence on their property. So, if staff and the council were to recommend a change that would allow for, say, an eight or a 10-foot tall fence by right, then that would not allow for that public process that neighbors now have the ability to participate in.
Yeah, I think it can be kind of a slippery slope, because I understand where you're coming from, Travis, I think, as far as, you know, big government and let us decide how big we want to build our fences to a certain extent, right? I think that's kind of where you're coming from. But then I think of the flip side, if I was your neighbor and you had the right to put up a 10-foot fence, but I really didn't want to stare at the other side of that 10-foot fence, there was nothing I could do about it.
Has there been any thought or any conversation in, in staff on district, district differences? Like the industrial zone would be different versus the residential would be different? Since we're, we're going through the process of making a code change, we might as well look at all avenues and all aspects of it.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if you look at the language that's included in your staff report under item G as in, four, it talks about general screening. So, it talks about in that paragraph that fences would be limited to either the current six feet in height or a proposed seven feet, but it also talks about screening that can be accomplished by hedges or by earth berms, shrubs, compact evergreen trees, things of that sort. So, there is the opportunity to accomplish screening with other mechanisms that could exceed the seven-foot, six or seven-foot requirement, but at this point, the way code is written, fences are restricted to six feet in all districts, and under the proposal would be restricted to seven feet in all districts unless a variance or a waiver were granted.
Does this affect the telecom mechanical equipment, how was code or amendment that we had maybe two years ago?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that code amendment was specific to the screening of mechanical equipment, and it required the mechanical equipment to be in a cabinet-type of structure. Previously, there wasn't that requirement of a cabinet, so you'd see wires and other mechanical pieces exposed. That amendment addressed the screening in the form of a cabinet rather than landscaping.
All right, so that was the cabinet side of it, so then the landscaping and the fencing for security purposes around that is still, that would, this would be affecting that?
Correct. Correct.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Do you happen to know some of the background as to why the Minnesota Building Code changed it from six to seven?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I apologize, I couldn't speak to that specifically. They, what I can tell you is that they wouldn't, anything seven, unless they would not require a permit for anything above that, then they have to go through and provide a very thorough structural analysis and engineering documents to prove that it is a sound fence, if you will.
Commissioners in general, how do you feel about the height? Yeah, go ahead.
Members, I perhaps can find some idea to what the conversation at the state level might be like, I'm not sure. It was something that I was familiar with when I worked, I believe, in Minnesota cities years ago. There is an advisory process for the state building code itself, and it's comprised of stakeholders from the building community, from the government, and from other related interest, interested parties that have petitioned beyond the advisory group. My surmise is, although I can't say on this specific matter, that that would have gone through an advisory process and been, you know, used at state level to inform folks about the possibility of changing the state number for the, for the height of the fence. Not that that's persuasive necessarily for our circumstances right here, but it does mean that it had some exposure to, to parties who are following the building code on a regular basis, on behalf of their, either their industry or their companies.
Okay. Thank you. Where are you coming? Go ahead.
Yes, I do have a question, a few. I'm a little confused on this. So, I understand that state is, state is changing the guideline, and Eden Prairie is looking to follow the state guideline, but we don't have to follow that guideline. We could stay at six, correct? My concern is, maybe, maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but generally, anyone putting up a fence and knowing what, what the code is, would generally be putting up seven-foot fences from now on. Usually go to the maximum fence for privacy.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, fence height varies depending on neighborhood, depending on the need of the property owner. Many neighborhoods have restrictive covenants in their homeowners' associations that may restrict the height of fences. We do see a lot of properties that choose to construct a three- or four-foot fence, whether it's for decorative purposes, or maybe they've got a small pets and that's big enough to keep the small pets in. So, nothing would require fences to go to a height of seven feet.
Correct.
But they would have that opportunity to, to do so.
I'm just, you know, my, my question, or my concern, is the overall aesthetics of a neighborhood, does this, would this change in, in any effect? You know, how many people generally come in and ask for a variance for a seven-foot fence? But now, we're, we would allow all fences to go up to seven feet without a variance. I don't, I just have a concern in that regard. Is it something we need?
Mr. Chair, members of the, of the commission, staff is proposing it only for the consistency's sake and in effort to address those property owners who may want to go out and, and construct a seven-foot fence consistent with building code, and then they'd find out, we've got a 60-to-90-day process that we'd have to go through in order to have the right to construct a seven-foot fence under the current code. That's not to say that Eden Prairie may still want to keep the six-foot height requirement in place and allow for that public process, but we wanted to bring this forward to you to be able to at least have that conversation.
So, I guess my follow-up on that would be, how many, do we get many requests for people looking for a variance for seven-feet fence, a height of seven feet?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we've had a couple in the, in the last couple of years. We did have one just this last fall, and a resident was seeking a seven-foot tall fence on their property. Ultimately, when working with staff, they chose to withdraw their request because they knew that the building code was changing in, you know, after the first of the year, so they chose to withdraw their request and kind of ride the tide out and see, see what happened. But we do on occasion get that request, yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jeff.
From a construction standpoint and a building materials standpoint, do they make seven-foot fences? I don't know, six feet seems to be pretty popular, four and a half and four feet, and then eight feet. What is the seven-foot chain link? Are you going to be out there cutting and snipping chain link for one foot drop? I mean-
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, with the change in the state building code, staff would anticipate that the industry, industry standard will, will change as well, and you will be able to go to Lowe's, Menards, any of those places that sell pre-made fences and be able to purchase a, a seven-foot tall section as well as other heights that may be available.
So, you said some associations are more restrictive than our city code?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's correct.
And not allowed to be less restrictive?
Correct.
So, I guess kind of, I think we kind of fall on the same line as that. We, we can, I think we can be less, or more restrictive than the state code. I don't think we should be less restrictive. I think we kind of follow up the chain as far as allowing higher than seven feet.
Yeah, I mean, I have a tendency to agree with that as well, to just kind of follow suit. You know, I keep going back to Commissioner Wiki's first comment, because I'm not a big fan of, you know, when it comes to big government and telling people how high or anything else. But at the same time, I think it does give an opportunity for the neighbors to at least weigh in and be a part of that process, one way or another. I don't know, any other final thoughts before we kind of move on with this?
I got a question on the fences and LRT. Has there been any, any conversation on a staff level or with other cities or the LRT project that they would need fences and it, for security purposes of the track and the rail system? And at what height would we see that that could be a possibility where we're going to have variances all over the place for fences?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, while staff has a variety of conversations with regard to the LRT project, we haven't quite gotten into that amount of detail quite yet, is with regard to the height of fences and locations of exactly where they may or may not be proposed. So, I don't have a direct answer to that question at this point. I would expect that there's that possibility, but I wouldn't be able to speak to how, the height of the fence that would need to be proposed as a part of that.
Mr. Commissioner, if I might pose a question for the rest of the body here.
Please.
Is there any idea in your mind that you might want to have delineation by zoning areas for fence heights? So, residential would have a more restrictive, I mean, just keep it at the six or the seven, and then industrial and central, you know, leaving language in there for whatever happens in two, three years for LRT. I mean, does that, does anyone have any thoughts on that? District, district delineation?
To be higher or to be lower?
Well, the conversation, I would open it up for the conversation to see what anybody's opinion would be on it.
I mean, I guess I'd be open to it. I don't know, does it make, yeah, I mean, to Commissioner Wiki's point, if we did it by zones, and I, and I'm guessing what your thought process is, industrial zones are going to go a little bit higher, right? Does it make the process easier for the industrial part of the city? And make, I guess, city staff, does it make, is it easier on city staff too? Because then you can go to 12 feet, I'm just throwing that number out there, doesn't matter, whatever it is. And then, we don't have to spend city time reviewing it, we just know it's 12 feet moving forward. I mean, is there anything like that? What's your-
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in my time with Eden Prairie, the requests that we've seen for over-height fences have been in the residential districts. I've not been a part of any that have been proposed in the commercial or industrial districts. Now, whether that's just because those fences have already been addressed possibly through a PUD process, and they have that mechanism where they envelope it all into one review process, or if their six-foot standard in the industrial and commercial zones are adequate for their purposes, either is a possibility.
Well, I would, I would be open for having more due diligence on- Well, I would, I would be open for having more due diligence on what kind of height we're seeing, what kind of requests we're seeing over the last decade, decade and a half, and then, you know, what other cities are doing and what other industries are doing in other cities for requests too, and then seeing, well, where's the balancing mark here? Like, you know, being favorable to industry, but yet also having some sort of standard which we can use.
Correct. Yeah, my, my concern would be more on the residential end. I'm, you know, I understand too about having the right to have a fence in whatever height you want, but I also, like you said, feel for the other person on the side of the fence. Would we be blocking off views of neighborhoods, you know, with allowing all the neighborhoods outside of any covenants or association, you know, to give free rein on seven-foot fences? I'd go for the seven feet if I could, if I was putting up a fence. I think that might be the norm.
Right.
Is that what we want to do in residential areas? Like I said, I can certainly see it in industrial. Perhaps that's a solution.
Julie, do you have any other, do you have comments? You look like you have a comment.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, no one added this time. I'm just taking it all in.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, what other, what do you guys think?
I guess I, my comment would only be to the point you just raised in looking forward. You know, I think maybe we need some more perspective on this issue, particularly because we're looking at so many changes because of LRT. Given when all of that comes to be, we're going to have some maybe new issues that arise that we haven't really thought through up to now. So maybe coming back to this, I guess I think if we do this tonight, it doesn't set us in place permanently if we find some other issues that present themselves in the meantime. But I, I'm just not prepared tonight to kind of go beyond just following the state building code.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Is there anyone that is for moving forward and doing seven-foot, like the state has changed theirs too and just kind of moving on? Is there anyone that would be for that?
I don't have strong feelings about it, but I don't have an issue with moving forward and being consistent with the state, the state building code. I think it makes it easier for everyone and, and city staff and planning and for builders to have a consistent number in terms of whether we want to go higher in an industrial area. I don't know if there's anybody asking for that, so it doesn't seem like necessary change to me.
Anybody else?
I'd agree with that. I guess it'd be nice to kind of find out some of the background, why, I'm sure there was a lot of vetting done by Minnesota Building Code as far as why this change was made.
Would you want to find out background before we move forward?
I, I wouldn't mind finding that. I would have, I don't, I mean, there seems to be some question on the panel up here, I guess.
Okay. Andy, you have any?
I'm prepared to go ahead with, with the seven-foot tonight, but I certainly, the majority of the commission wants to wait and find out what more we can about discussion at state level.
Mary, what's your thought?
I would, I would like more information on it.
Okay. So I'm hearing a little bit more information. Julie, do you think you can provide that? We'll discuss it a little bit later date.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what kind of, I guess you need a motion for us for a continuance, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, you can either choose to close the public hearing, or if you'd like to keep it open, you can continue it to a date certain. I would probably recommend if you choose to continue it, continuing it to the 23rd of March, just because the ninth is a pretty quick turnaround.
Okay. Seeing that this is a public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns? You're sure? Really sure? Okay. All right. Then with that being said, I guess my vote would be to continuance for the March 23rd. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. With that, I'll need a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to recommend a continuance of the March 23rd, 2015 meeting.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will continue on. Are there any, is there any planners' reports for tonight, Julie?
No, sir.
All right. Members' report. It looks like we have one community advisory committee report.
Well, I'll be, we can be brief. We had a, the community advisory committee, the Southwest Light Rail, met last week or two weeks ago, along with the business advisory committee, and sort of a joint meeting to an orientation of the process of what will be monthly meetings where we will discuss specifics of the design for the stations and the engineering for the stations and the artwork around the stations and community outreach related to getting community impact from the stations. Our first meeting of just the advisory committee is, or just the community advisory committee is tomorrow night, and perhaps on the ninth, we will have a more detailed report. But I'll let Andrew give.
Yeah, I was in. We discussed our vision of light rail transit from our perspective, and we didn't talk about fence height, but maybe we'll mention it next time.
And how's the process going so far? I know you're just getting started. So far, so good?
So far, so good.
Okay. Anything else to add?
No.
Any other members' reports for tonight? Okay. Any continuing business? Any new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.[1798.63]